Here in the following, thank you to the city of New York. Guys, it's a good to be back on the scene. So, question. This is a special call meeting of the New York City Council for a work session on two items. Comprehensive plan update for 2021 to 2041. And discussion of the proposed ordinance where it looks at sale and still spirits. And first I will be agenda views the common plan and the discussion of the government's pricing. How are you?
Yeah. Hopefully that's like, had to, but you did. Um, so essentially what we're trying to do is give an update on what this steering committee is proposing. It's part of the draft for the conference and coming. Um, I'm gonna kind of go over the major changes that were made. Um, do a high level overview of the chapters that are involved. And what I'd like to do is get feedback from you all. So that we can figure out what we'd like to include, what you know, and maybe come up with some consensus. So that we can, um, take this or transmit it to you all much as your last meeting in August. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and start through the chapter. First chapter is essentially an introduction and overview. Um, it basically is background information on the city, demographics, the history of the city. Um, and about the role of the steering committee was. And our steering committee was made up of members of each of the boards and committees that were all home. So we had one from each committee. We had two from the planning committee commissioner because that's their main focus here. Um, they had five times. And what we discussed originally was a kickoff meeting. We had one on needs and opportunities, one's on government policy. And then we had another on, um, the land use map itself. And then the line one is incorporating the major themes that we received from the public into the policies and so forth. Chapter two is the community involvement plan. Um, we did a lot of public participation this year. We had a website devoted just to it. Um, thank you to Ashley Coop, she really worked hard with us on this. And I also want to give a shout out to Chris Paul. He wouldn't have been here tonight. Um, he's not able to make it and he had worked for seven months on this. So, um, he really worked hard. Um, we got flyers, we did this part giving our website out, um, email blast, two public workshop, Zoom information sessions, five pop-up events all over town. And then we also had a 1,037 participants in our survey, which we were all excited that we had about eighty questions. And here are some of the bits where we went out. Hasko was in one of those, I'll tell you that. Um, and Tina homework, who's also my assistant, um, was there. So we had some pretty good participation. We got a lot of you guys to do responses. Common things that we had, what we love about being in downtown, by far number one. Um, small town park, bill, restaurant shops, parks, walkability. You can see the list, stay quiet, I mean, building, everybody loves the link. Um, we actually did one of our pop-ups on the link and it was surprising to me the number of people who were not from the community and using the link. So it's always interesting when you need to get feedback. Across in Atlanta, this is the community history schools, what needs to be improved. Um, number one, traffic congestion, synchronizing the lights on Walterboro and other major roads. Too much work apartments and housing. Ready diversity of businesses, restaurants and retail, a place with entertaining fast food, um, car washes, those types of places. Anyone know how we do not have those? Um, getting more activities for kids and parents. Flat trails, transit options, outdoor dining options, dressage structure and work for the house. And then we asked, what are the cities about, create it all. And they said more parks and green space, everybody loves those. Um, continue to expand the link. More cultural arts venues and programs, redevelop, repurpose state of buildings. Call it tanks building, that being mentioned, it will grow there out there. Andrew Street, Old Mill Building, Main Street, the old hospital building, the Hatland Building. And then there was a need for additional grocery stores in downtown or west side of town. And then also maintain existing communities and track and address and pay issues. So those are the common themes, um, and we took that to the steering committee. We had a session where we looked at that and we were working on our needs and opportunities and goals and policies. So then chapter three is the needs and opportunities. And this is what I want to discuss with you all because in here, there are five major areas of focus. And that's going to be land use, capital improvements, economic development, transportation and housing. And so what we did in these areas is we went through it with the steering committee. And then they decided what they wanted to keep, what they wanted to get rid of, what they wanted to add and what they want to change. So what we need to know from you all tonight are your thoughts on the information or the items that they left in and added and changed. And if this is something you want to have. But what we'd like to do again by the last meeting in August is have this completed so that we can take it to, um, DCA and Three Rivers. So we really need to know if this is in line with what your thoughts are. So having said that, under land use, you can see the items that remain. There's an overall lack of available and included on the purposes. Um, created in parents and corridors and private household areas. Um, there's potential for expansion through annexation opportunities. Makes use development should be encouraged increasingly as a way to improve overall quality of life. Increase housing opportunities, traffic improvements, et cetera. And I guess what I need to know, are you all good with keeping those in? Basically, if it is the same thing that you all had in our last meeting.
Be the yes for me.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone want to add?
Well, I have a question. It seems to be a stark contrast to like two, three slides before that where it said, what you want to change and what you want to say. Talking about development, housing and apartments was like, I'm in the top three, I think. And this is talking about housing and apartments. So it's like people wanted to slow down the growth, but it's not like that. But this is talking about land use of, uh, expanding. And, uh, very first bullet, their overall lack of available length and development purposes, whatever kind of development that may be. Um, and increasing the land space for that. So, I don't know, I'm seeing this as sort of a, a little bit of a contrast here or not.
Are you equating the lack of development plan with annexations that are trying to have residential development or?
No, I, I, because development purposes and annexation, you know, that's how, that is how we increase our land space. Whether it could be any kind of development, commercial, residential, whatever. Um, but like on those bullets from the pop-ups, I think it was from the community input. One of the, one of the main detractors was too much growth via housing and apartments, I think. How I think it was, something like that.
Okay, so how would you like to see, or what would you like to see taken out? Or would you like to see it modified or where are you going? Because we're trying to get direction on what the council has called build up.
In your professional opinion, how do these statements help us get to where we want to go? Or are you asking me something like that?
Well, under needs and opportunities are what this is city need or what opportunities are out there. And then under the first one there, the lack of available land, we really don't have a lot of available land for development. So if we are going to look at growing, whatever it be, commercial, residential, we need to have land. So that's why I look at that much is basically states of habit, we basically don't have a lot of land for development purpose, whatever that may be. Um, pretty good parents before we're covered out of pilot travel areas, it's ongoing issue. I think most people would agree, other than the world different areas, we really do need to look at parents and continue what we're trying to do. Um, potential expansion through annexation opportunities. If we're going to grow again, we can use all the land. So, um, there may be areas that have it out there. Yes.
Uh, why did they remove the popular road, their future, their status, and the climate development potential?
Because they felt that that's already been addressed with popular place annexation. That looks like it is going to be coming before you all in October. And then also with the Chick-fil-A and the medical, um, buildings and stuff that have been built out there. So they didn't see that it was necessary to keep that annexed since it's already been addressed.
It's been accomplished. It's where it says near the future interstate interchange, right? Yes, absolutely. Right. Okay, I took that.
And under the makes use development should be increasingly a way to improve overall quality of life. They wanted it to be more walkable, with the makes use in the future, so that should happen.
I just wanted to check the audio just for everybody's purposes. As long as you speak up, you're hearing everybody fine. Matter of fact, Tracy, we could probably turn your microphone off if it's echoing a little bit. Uh, but if you speak up clearly, I can hear Dustin really, 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 really easily. He's back here on the microphone. So speak clearly or we're good.
Turn mine off, it will go from there.
Speak up, let's speak up, doesn't speak loud.
Try to speak loud. So going back to this, um, are you all good with leaving these in and taking that one out? Or do you all want to change the first one about the overall lack of land?
I don't see how we can change that, frankly. It is what it is. And, but you have, we have to leave it in there because there's going to be annexation possibilities from the divorce. And in the near future, to say that there wouldn't be, it would be kind of ninety-one of our parts. So, I'm not thinking that's what we did.
Any objections to leaving, leaving those points here? Okay?
All right, move on. Thank you. So the items that were added, um, continue to promote the significance of preserving historic structures. There's a need to identify food deserts within the city limits. And food deserts are areas where there are not healthy options out there. Um, one thing about the steering committee, they were very diverse because of the backgrounds and the places that they work. And so therefore we got a whole lot of items covered that we hadn't really addressed in the past. Um, as with the food deserts, I had one public comment come in. So, um, to couple with that, somebody suggested providing some incentives for providers of fresh groceries to areas of the city without them. Um, so are you all good with the food desert, um, issue here as well as the preserving historic structures? Yes?
Is the EMC sides in the city?
It is not, and we talked about that. Because, um, one of the things they said though is that they felt like ultimately that site was going to be annexed. So they wanted to include it in the plan.
Who said ultimately?
The steering committee. There are members on the steering committee that says ultimately we get asked all the time about this. Because we pointed out, it's not in the city limits. And they said yes, but they feel like ultimately it would probably be annexed, so they want to include it in the plan. It's up to you all to take it out.
Well, I have to accept.
It can be taken out, that's up to you all.
It's fine leaving it. I mean, I was saying one of us say it because it should be. Do you think this side of the past on the north side should be in the city limits? You make more sense if we do that.
We have a lot of people that have asked about that side. But again, it's because of its configuration and the creation of an island that we haven't been able to annex it in the past. But they wanted to put it in there, um, included the former theme park hospital site. And you can see what I did there is put the current plan, the proposed draft. And then the last sentence, instead of small town, they wanted to go with hometown there. So any thoughts on these?
Real quick question for you, going back to the food deserts real fast. Do you have like a heat map of that or some sort of a, have you identified where there is the food options they're talking about? Where there's not, like a visual? And is this talking about restaurants or is it talking about like grocery stores? Is it talking about, you know, what kind of food are we talking about here?
It's, it's grocery stores with fresh options like fruits, vegetables and so forth. There's a lot of places out there where you have only, especially if you're only a person that has limited on those of transportation. When it comes to being able to run out and get food, it's probably going to be a convenience store, which is typically higher price or it doesn't have fresh foods. And so food deserts are one of the things that, um, has been discussed in our field. And then some of the nonprofits and so forth work with that. So, um, that's why they wanted to include that in. And then also, um, any thoughts on that incentives for providers? That someone probably?
Can you define incentives? I mean, from incentive wise, I think we need to create an environment where we partner with those and give them. And by that, I mean, not as much, not giving them anything, but taking away something that we're charging. So the entry level into the business or into the purchase of it is not as high. Which causes them not even want to do any type of investment. Following?
Right.
So, uh, in words, I think we clear this and I talk about impact fees or, or any type of fee that could offset costs. Is that what you're referring to? Incentive?
Yes, incentivize, it may not be impact fee, but it may be other things that's out there. Again, this is a suggestion for the public. So I'm trying to get if you all feel like this is something we want to include, doesn't have to be included. Um, it's just going out there.
I think anything we can do to partnership and encourage it, to me, is good thing over the next twenty years.
So you're kind of just sort of finding like removing some of the regulatory barriers? Is that, you know, that what we're coming up?
And it could be, I mean, up to different things. It could be building permits, wage or, you know?
The ordinance and regulatory type of stuff.
If they had to say what type of incentive, that would be up to you all, what types of incentives if you wish to go that direction. But, um, essentially that was something they threw out there. And again, it can or cannot be included in the plan, that's up to you all. But we're just trying to get some consensus on the language that's being proposed. And whether you want that as something we can, you know, craft some language for.
I've got a question, what would change with hometown, hometown?
They were concerned by saying small town, that people would think small town thinking. But yet when it gets up to the vision statement, I will tell you that they did, um, small town charm. So, but I think that the small town atmosphere, there were some concerns, um, again, that the small town thinking.
I, I like the small town.
I do too.
Great.
Sure, no longer small town. We got forty thousand people.
In a lot of ways.
Well, that's population wise, but the field wise is you can, you can maintain small town field. It's probably.
I agree.
Yeah.
That's the small town charm, the vision statement.
Yeah. The vision statement.
Yeah.
So as consensus, we go with hometown or small town?
I'm happy with hometown. I like hometown.
I like small town.
Small town.
Where'd you put small hometown?
It's your plan.
Then we're conflicted, we're, we're conflicted.
I'm frozen at this, I was here to continue to grow.
I like small town.
I do too. I think that there's a very significant difference between hometown and small town. Um, that, you know, hometown is less descriptive because everybody has a hometown. Whether it's New York or whether it's somewhere else, you know? Um, small town is, should more in the atmosphere.
Because you're talking about? Small town, okay, everybody?
Small town.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, everybody, everything else good up there? I'm going to the next one. What about leaving EMC? Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yes.
We're tucking twenty years out?
Yep.
All right, and incentives, do you want me to craft something for incentives on the food desk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, everybody?
Yes.
We're moving on. All right, the last item that was changed, redevelopment opportunities. Um, again, including addressing gray fields. Um, the gray fields are large spans of a park, oh, excuse me, parking areas. So they wanted that included in there to be specific that they want to address those, especially in the Gulfboro area. And maybe pull buildings up to the front or redevelop so they don't have those big, huge parking lots in the front side. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, move it on. Capital improvements. Um, they pretty much left this one intact from what you all had last time. Um, they didn't remove anything, add anything or change anything under needs and opportunities. So, um, unless you all have something here, um, that issues and partner who have questions about. If we're good with that, we can leave that in. It's like I said, same from last time. When you all anticipated on the steering committee.
Yes. I'm good with what it reads. Anyone?
The, I'm looking at the fourth one, additional parks need to be identified. Is that really saying additional spaces need to be identified to create parks? Or is that existing parks need to be, um, upgraded, kind of what we're doing with C J Smith? And making it more recreational opportunities?
I think they were looking at maybe pocket parks, places. So you have small parks in neighborhoods and different things for individuals that don't have a lot of parks around them. That's what they were talking about, trying to identify additional park space, um, for neighborhood related.
And building offers some opportunities to open up some pocket parks as well that aren't accessible for.
Now, if you all would rather it be defined as additional pocket parks need to be identified? Or just leave it as park space, that kind of opens up if you need bigger or smaller.
I think it needs to be as broad as you can make it.
Okay.
Yeah. It needs to be what?
As broad as you can make it.
Yes.
Everybody good with this?
Yes.
All right, move it on. Economic development, you can see the items that remained in there. Um, ongoing effort to offer prospective business process or a mix of site selection. State goes taking advantage in West Georgia, Georgetown. And a city making an effort publicly, um, to utilize publicly some land in the central business district. Everybody good with those?
Real quick, what do they mean by utilize, what's in that third bullet, effort to utilize?
I think what they were wanting to do is where the city does have space there, um, maybe there's vacant lots or they have buildings or so forth. Like the old jail or whatever, is trying to find ways to utilize those spaces. Um, it's called, well, tanks could fit in that now. Um, to provide more opportunities, whether it be pocket cars or, um, whatever you all want to use them for. But to identify those properties and, and get them used. Any comments? Good, bad?
Good. Good.
Okay. Items that were removed, um, the alleys in downtown are in various states of need.
And they still are. They can put back in the top, on the top list.
Thing of the year, maybe why they took it out. Because under the current plan, um, after she committed to explore the commercial potential and bring space, potential downtown area, including alleys. So I think they thought that and that, um, addressed that, but we can still leave that in there. Um, since they are in various states of need and that is a true statement. So Hasko, will you add that? Um, there's a perceived lack of advertising that promotes the availability of units trying workforce. Again, I think that they, um, added that in down here on the bottom one. Um, to promote key informational outlets, um, the availability of units trying workforce. So that's why they took that out. There's a need to encourage to use the uniform data and statistics for all organizations located within Coweta County. I think they added it up there, there is a need to produce, maintain illicit community resource organizations. And they felt it fell under that. So that's why they took those three out. And we have them, you want back in there? Um, you said the alleys, we'll add that back in. If you want the other two added back in as well, we can do that.
Now that the first one is fine, we go back to the other two, I think they have rest of them in the changes.
All right, and I'm going to go over here to the items that were added again. Um, the need to produce that community resource list to create a disaster recovery plan to deal with the tornado. Um, need to support opportunities to preserve and expand arts and cultural activities. Um, if you recall back on the common themes, that was something that came up was the arts and cultural activities. So they wanted something in there addressing that and expanding it.
Was that, we already have a cultural arts committee.
Correct.
So this would be opportunities to expand.
Well, they're just talking about additional cultural arts maybe through them, maybe through other organizations, whatever it may be. To be able to expand those type of activities in the community because they feel like there's probably additional needs. That kept being the common theme.
Yeah, it, it doesn't limit it to cultural arts.
That's correct, it could be other groups as well.
Expanses.
Everybody good with those?
Yep.
Okay, items that were changed. Um, again, the alleys were addressed there and we talked about that on continue to promote through key informational outlets, the availability of newness trained workforce. So they added in that continue to promote. Everybody good with that?
Yep. Yes, anybody? Okay.
Sorry. I want to translate.
No, go ahead.
Um, so the items that remain, connectivity between the various lands need to be taken into, land uses need to be taken into consideration. Um, coordination efforts with Coweta County needs to be enhanced. Bike and ped, again, that was something that, the themes that kept coming over and over again. Um, and then the creation of pocket parks, which is what we talked about on the other one. As a way for New York to enhance its transportation network by the areas that connect and pass along the land and so forth. Um, items that were removed, the city is interested in where it would partner establish a ring bump system. They took that out because it's already happened with the lane. Everybody good with those?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Um, items that were added, there's a need to expand the link. Again, this is one that was brought up, um, in our meeting or the, uh, pop-ups in the survey and so forth. Safety on the link. Um, this especially came up when I was over at the link. Um, two things, backrings they'd like to have and lighting. And those are the two things that came up when it came to the link. People love it though, love the bridge, love it, love what it is now. Um, but.
Tracy, you were talking about lighting. It's a, it's a sunrise, it's sunset trail.
That's correct.
So lighting would encourage or allow for?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Evening, you know, working nighttime activities.
I would go with pedestrian follow and transportation, maybe I missed it. We need to enhance the, the pedestrian experience of where it is because people speed through town, they turn onto the crosswalks. They don't even respect pedestrians. We were not town, that happens to be successful, that's one thing.
Okay.
Maybe it's there or somewhere else, we need something like that.
Okay, you can note that down and we'll craft some language on that. And whatever we craft, we'll bring that to you all and tell you what we made changes to. So that when we bring it before you all, on the, at the August twenty-fourth meeting, you all are aware. And we'll, we'll get that out to you all ahead of time. Um, there's a need to assess, um, truck traffic on major dirt fairs. Um, and of course Andrew Street extension, sorry about that, is an opportunity for enhanced traffic flow. And then parking issues in downtown need addressing. Again, parking was one of the things that came up on the, for downtown in our common themes. Um, but that comes up every plan, so. Um, items that were changed in the current plan, um, there's a lack of alternative transportation options. We put the trolley route in, so that was taken out. Um, and then the city will increase transportation into effectiveness, effectiveness through, you all know it as MacIntosh Parkway. But it was the extension of recent twelve, trail is what it was known back five years ago. So, um, we took that out and just left it at what it may have been. Any comments on any of that? Everybody good with that? Yes?
I want to piggyback on the, on grocery second, you know, there's traffic that don't respect the pedestrians that are crossing. But I'm also seeing pedestrians do not adhere to the red hand. There's been times I've been sitting to the redneck and people just walked out. And someone honked a horn at him and this guy, a couple of times he yelled out, pedestrians have the right way. And here's his red hand.
And they do, because the lights are changing. Stay always, it would, you step out.
Right, but, you know, you, you have this red hand and.
But you're saying that the lights are not changing, the pedestrian from the road.
They'll, they'll cross, they don't care if there's a red hand here.
You're sure that cross not the traffic, not about, about the light. So she gave a moment, you cross by the light. So I'm waiting to take it down with the traffic and I'm off.
Just on, on the drive here, just to see if we know, and this one guy walked right in front of me. It's, the light was green, so I'm going on, he stepped right in front of me.
Hopefully he stopped.
Part of it. It would have been catastrophic.
So we need a generalized statement addressing pedestrian, um, safety in the downtown area, the roadways.
All right, so we can address this in multiple ways. I mean, there's, there's some other things we can look at. But addressing pedestrian safety, I think is like a state that we want.
So, so like that last bullet, just change to address park, downtown parking and also address pedestrian, uh, something.
Okay.
In the.
We can add something that are on that. All right, everybody good then?
Real, uh, about the alternative transportation, the proposed draft, the new one would say just a lack of, there's a lack of alternative transportation. About the alternative transportation, the proposed draft, the new one would say just a lack of, there's a lack of alternative transportation options. We addressed with the trolley, what now, what does this lead to?
They're just comments going from different people. They got the ride share at the county and now the county's transportation plan will also be included as a kind of an attachment or add-on to our transportation plan. But they'd like to see other things, for Gotham, it's a dial rod and the others, some people would like to see fixed routes or different things. Don't know if that's going to happen in the next twenty years, but that is one of the things that they had mentioned.
It seems kind of doesn't even happen in there, and I propose to remove that.
Anybody else, do you all want to review that on the alternative transportation option?
No, I think for a twenty-year plan, there you need to recognize it. It may not be the short-term work program, but for a twenty-year plan, I think it needs to be.
It is a twenty-year plan, so.
You got to keep, yeah.
Everybody good with leaving it? Are you good with leaving it?
I'm, I'm good with leaving it. Because there are, you never know what the other technologies are going to be. So by the time twenty years rolls around, as to what transportation really is, I mean, that was one of the number one complaints was transportation. So to not put it in there, that we're going to address it, I think would be disilluminating the process.
It just leaves the option for a possibility.
That's right. Oh, remember, your, this is a vision of the goal, so this isn't a work order, this is just general statements, so. That's why you're not getting too specific, something that someone might be talking to right now.
So we're good with leaving it?
Yep.
I'm good with it.
All right, moving on. And then the last one is, they had including roundabouts, there's an opportunity to enhance city regulations to encourage city including roundabouts. And we're using roundabouts everywhere, so they didn't feel like that was necessary to have that in there. So they just said, we'll stick it out and we'll just see through interception, quality design through interception. So everybody good with that?
Yes.
So it just felt like there's a need to have roundabouts in there. All right.
Train and rail and transportation out, better now.
Actually, when they get in there, I like high speed rail, there's one thing that's addressed, we'll be getting into those policies and so forth, so we'll issue that. Housing, items that remain, explore ways to address gentrification displacement issues. I think there's concern about people in different neighborhoods not being able to stay in their communities and rents go increase. Or, you know, as prices, the home values go up. So they wanted to do that, that's something you all looked at too. This was last year, so you all have this in there. Again, dilapidated residential housing and poor property maintenance is an ongoing need. Increase involvement in the urban redevelopment agency is viable opportunity and we're trying to get that program running. The city may encourage to focus on quality building materials to help ensure excellent residential progress. City will work to encourage safe walkable neighborhoods through public safety efforts and quality infrastructure design. Anybody got any questions on there that are made good with this?
What's, can you, can you hit it real, real fast? What's the current definition we use for gentrification?
It's basically where your community, the individuals who live in your community can no longer live in the community. So that they have to move out and it changes the community.
Okay. Do we have that appendix in here with definitions of how we're using these terms?
I don't have that in there.
I'm saying, you know, like fifteen, ten years, fifteen years, you might want to go back and, it might be helpful. But I get what you're saying.
You can add that, but that's essentially what that is looking at, for people being displaced. Items that were removed, there's a need for high-end housing, there's more professional outlets, employment opportunities development. The, they took that out because they felt like it was addressing one specific type of housing. And they felt like they should, that the city should be looking at all types of housing.
The first bullet, they, they addressed very specific technologies as well. Gentrification, that's considered a type of policy as well, you know, as, as nature could ages and turns over. I would propose keeping it in.
I would think it needs to be in, I mean, there's, there's a gap there.
Okay.
I mean, inside the city limits, there's a gap there.
Does everybody consensus keep that in?
Yep.
I agree.
All right, Passau, go write that down, please. Items that were added, investment should be made in diversifying affordable housing solutions while maintaining community standards. Promote preservation efforts for residential historic districts. So they were big on the historic preservation. And then again, the diversifying affordable housing solutions. So we talked about the missing metal, the different types of housing options that are out there. Any comments on those too?
My only comment regarding the affordable housing is clearly attempting to work against to define it. And then I believe that's where the additional incentives can come in to create those types of environment for developers and or just small builders, people who can build small. I like what Chris was saying about the twenty apartments, you know, the old, I won't say the old days, but the memory, especially when you do lap duplexes, quads, et cetera. And that can, can create an investment opportunity for people who can build one and then rent one at one side of the land. So I would agree leaving the affordable aspect in, but along with creating some incentives to really create a package that we can sell to the market. And here's what we're operating, if you do these things, then this is what we're encouraging you to infill, fill in the gaps, we all know the rules.
So you would leave that, that added and add some type of incentive?
I'm adding, adding that, yes, leave that on this.
Thoughts on that?
That's my thoughts.
The rest of the gamble?
Yes, welcome.
I agree.
On that first sense, I would maybe change, just change and say encourage investments to be, to be made in diversifying.
So encourage investments to be made?
You know, worded right, but just encourage investments.
Actually, I think the city has responsibility in it too. So I think that there is a part for us to do as well as the government to do.
There's a difference between responsibility and investment.
Well, I actually would have responsibility though. And I think that it's more than encouraging somebody else to do it, it's us doing our part too, which is essential to make it happen. So I think that leaving it the way that it is allows us to look at all of this, whether it's just us or someone else. Not us just saying hey, somebody else should do this.
Thoughts from everybody? Well, maybe consensus.
I like, I like the way it's, for some of their reasons, just again, thinking twenty years keeps the broad, a broad experience.
That side of the thing?
Final that, I, but I'll, I'll change, second, I'll ask the question. Where do we in this document, and I've heard that we don't, address the tornado? The issues of reestablishing the housing stock in the neighborhoods regardless of where the neighborhood is. Because that, even though it's not a twenty-year thing, it is a five-year work program thing. And I want that in this document, so that you can pull it out of the five-year work program and out of, out of this document. So where in here is that?
We had the mention of the getting a disaster recovery plan in there. And that was something that we had talked about in place and Passau and I, about developing that. And then that would be used as the tool on how to develop, to go back and redevelop for the tornado.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because it does need to be part of a disaster relief plan. I mean, there's that night, going forward, heaven forbid that we ever have another issue like that. But I think, I think in, in housing, just in particular, in this section, there needs to be a statement that says something about the city will encourage, invest, however we need to say that, with the community, through other community partners and agencies, like it says here. To reestablish those housing products that were in the neighborhoods that were restored by the plan. And I know how you say it, kind of what I said, but it needs to be in here somewhere. Does anybody disagree with that?
No, this is right here, I know, so we got to trust that part.
Well, we will add that in, Passau, you got that? Thank you. Yes.
In that one line, items that were changed while protecting residential historic districts. Back up to the line above it, promote preservation efforts for residential historic districts. I'd like to see promote preservation efforts and protect residential historic districts.
Okay. Yeah, I think what they did is they felt that that bottom line, when they changed that out, while protecting residential historic districts. Since they put up the top there to promote preservation efforts for residential historic districts, they felt it was the same thing. So that's why they took that out, they thought it was redundant.
Well, I, I feel like it's the two different ones, promoting preservation and protecting. I'd like to see the promote preservation efforts and protect residential historic districts.
Protect is a stronger, stronger.
So how about promote preservation efforts that protect residential historic districts? Did that work?
It does, I think.
I think it does.
Anybody? Okay. Going on down, we did the first one there, under items that were changed, the issue of housing for persons recovered from domestic violence as well as homeless need to be addressed. They wanted to add in there through a coordinated effort with area agencies and organizations. So that there is a collaboration that's taking place with the city and those organizations. Any thoughts on that?
Downtown.
Downtown, anybody good with that?
Downtown.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on. And the last one is affordable housing, should be identified promoted infill within downtown. They wanted to say in existing neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's one problem.
You kind of overdid that stuff?
We did talk about it in the affordable housing. This is just something that they had put in there that they felt that. Again, it was more specific that it go with infill areas as a location for them. Well, we have that hit lots now.
Yep.
Sure if I get with it?
Good.
Okay. So chapter four, vision goals and policies. This is another area where again, same thing, five areas we're taking, we're taking a look at and we'll discuss what changes and so forth they have. Here's the proposed, proposed vision statement they came up with. Unit will continue to successfully blend this historic character in small town southern charm with unique lifestyle opportunities. Including promoting cultural arts, supporting educational health, excellence in balancing economic development. Things that have changed here, out of that small town and from the southern charm. There used to be progressive in front of unique lifestyle, but they were concerned about progressive being taken the wrong way. So they wanted to take that out and just add it with unique lifestyle opportunities. And then the rest, the only other thing would be balancing economic development. Any comments on that? Are you all good with this vision segment?
Yes.
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 All right.
Next.
Next, land use. Again, items that remain, considering the city's ability to maintain local service while continuing to grow. Encouraging growth and development that supports high quality of life for the citizens, sustainability, welcome to Annecy, the islands and Oregon peninsula. Encouraging industry uses to promote quality life, alternative transportation options. And encouraging higher densities in appropriate locations as a need for continued growth and growth. That was also from your last comp plan, any changes on that? You all like it? Still good with it?
Yeah.
Do I? Items that were removed, making sure resources grow as the population grows. They felt that was under your maintaining level of services that are to be had. So they felt that was redundant. And then considering location when evaluating potential land use and growth, you all do that as part of the rezoning process when it's brought to you all. So they felt like that was redundant as well, that wasn't necessary.
Trace, if you could do us a favor?
Yeah.
And explain the difference between what we just went over and those categories and what we're going over now in the same categories?
Yes, sorry.
I think there's confusion.
Okay, so we got needs and opportunities and we got goals and policies. Needs and opportunities are things out there where areas where you've identified you may have a lack of something. Or there may be an opportunity to do something with it. Goals and policies are ideas or objectives kind of that you have. That's going to drive what you're looking at in the future in terms of your regulations and things. So there are two different sets here, the comprehensive plan requires us to do both. And so that's why I'm going through this. Karen, can you go through these? Try to go through as quick as I can. Anybody, have any objections to those items that remain up there?
The bullet number five, encourage your higher densities, that's kind of like saying apartments. And we've been getting a lot of go back on apartments in the higher densities. It says appropriate location, so it could be done well.
Correct.
It's just making sure that, you know, that this allows them the next twenty years as well as any other density we already have in the books.
So yes, that's saying that you could have higher densities, but they need to be in the appropriate place to cover. You all?
Good?
Good with that?
Good.
Okay, items that were removed, making sure resources grow as population grows, again, we went through that, sorry. And then up here, there were no items added to changes. They wanted to define gray bill so that people understood those are large parking lot spans. Clean industrial growth. Development authority gentleman said it should be advanced manufacturing and class A office development now. So they changed that out from clean industry. And then the other part was inappropriate location and balancing higher densities with usable green space and then, and it is inappropriate locations. Everybody good with those?
Quick question, on the second one, advanced manufacturing class A. For the, what, what is class A and why, again, if we try to keep this broad, are we, do we need to say specifically class A?
That's up to you all, they just put that in there. If you all would prefer to have office development.
All right, you just say class A. Class A office development typically is, the, 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 without the influence, a higher end, two-storeroom elevator, you know, some, some type of concierge service rating. It's something that if corporate Atlanta was looking for a back office location, for a class A office space, they would, if they could find it in this, it would be a great place for a back office to corporate.
And it is a good.
Not saying that at high price, but there we're paying low price, still having that quality office space.
Okay, so it's specifically that a certain type of.
Higher density term is, you know, you can find some, some descriptions of that.
So we need to put in, I'm sorry, it's has to be supporting high quality, advanced manufacturing, high or high quality classes, you just make sure it's, or is that kind of?
I think advanced manufacturing and class A is going to mean that it's a higher level. Again, that was the gentleman from that account development group that put that in. Any other on this? Are we good?
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
Maybe it's just more common. I see this higher density language used a lot. And so my thought is, and part of my concern is, what are they specific, or what is this specifically addressing? Because we have some, I'll tell you, comments that I hear are, we don't want to become a north side of the land. I hear that often. So when people hear higher densities, oftentimes, I don't know much higher density you can get in some cases where we are. So help me understand, what is, what does that mean if I'm going to sign on to this, for like, for the twenty-year plan, et cetera?
All right, now.
Density is a big issue.
You have two ways, either our highest density residential zoning is going to be twelve inch break. But you can always come in with a plan on the mixed use development right now and do higher density because it is, or a PBR or something along those lines. Where you actually come in and say, here's what I want to do, but you have a plan that goes with it. So higher densities would be, is going to be, you're more probably hiding apartments where you're, not high, excuse me, garden style. Big number, high densities over twelve inch break.
I think that there's some other more gentle things that people think of apartments when they think of higher density. The truth is, there's a lot more to it. I mean, duplex is a higher density than your single family home.
So it's class A office?
Right.
Ten houses are.
Are higher density. It's not our residential's office spaces, it's, there's a variety of things that you can do. It's, there's a variety of things that you can do, that higher density.
Well, maybe I'm focusing on just the density part of the question. Global experience. I have to keep in mind, it's 20 years.
So again, can we, can we get kind of?
Better way to say it, not necessarily, better way to say it, but another way to say it, is a more intense use of the language.
Right.
Right. You could say higher density, or you could say a more intense use of the language. And then when you couple that with green space amenities, then you got a product that's, et cetera. Just to say higher density, higher density, higher density.
White, white good too. Yeah.
Weighted development on smaller tracks of land.
Right. So.
Maybe if you pull that word out, you're just going to insert up those, maybe just like that.
Or just change like higher densities to zone classifications, balancing zoning, zoning or zoning uses or, you know, with usable re-space amenities. Cause now.
How about balancing development? Can we just say balancing development with usable green space amenities or corporate location? Or do you want it to be, development is everything. You're looking at really the higher density.
In development?
All you need to open up a can of worms.
That was good. That's why we're having this conversation.
That's what, that's what I, that's what I hear.
This is going to be your whole question, so that's what we're supposed to do.
I would propose inching the higher density system development. Because then that encompasses not only residential, but commercial as well.
Is that kind of change what we're trying to do there, what to do is? I'm not going to work on this. I mean, we're really looking at the, the smaller lots with the larger amount of development on it and balancing that with the green space amenities. Development could be anything, it could be big, large lot, um, big tracks of land development. So.
You addressing things like off the place, which is a higher density.
That would be to me a higher density, because you're taking, you know, it is a big track of land, but for the development that's going on there, it's a lot of development. So, that would be, I think, what they're looking at, how do you balance that with green space amenities and providing those so that it is more of a community.
And isn't that already encompassed in our mixed-use ordinance? Because like that, as residential, as commercial, it had a lot of green space.
You were required, right?
So it's already, it's already addressed.
I'm thinking, I, I guess, you know, if you're thinking about it in terms of large tracks of land being developed, but it's not necessarily thinking of redevelopment opportunities, it's not thinking of single zoning classifications like, you know, allowing duplexes, which we have right now, in our zoning plan, or quad duplexes, or things that would be the same size as something, you know, like a house, for instance, a big house. If you were to turn, build something the same size, but had three units or two units to it, that's a higher density. But we're not addressing that with talking about buildings.
Yeah, I understand.
You see what I'm saying? That makes sense?
I perfectly see what you're saying. You know, when people, most people hear that, they're not, they're not, they're not.
So you all want to take that out altogether, that's another option.
I think it should be there, I just, you know, I think that we're trying to land on something that everybody feels comfortable with, but, because there is a.
That's a point, and there'd be a foundation to higher density.
But truth is, that's what we're talking about.
I think we need to leave it in there. Is there another way you can order? What is your suggestion?
Did you say? It's just a more intense use of the word?
Intense.
Okay.
Land use and densities?
We'll craft someday if we're good with that. All right, can we move on?
Yes.
Yep.
Items that were added and? Capital improvements, items that remain. Again, these are part of what you all have, maintaining existing facilities and infrastructure, maintenance on buildings, stormwater management improvements, developing new facility, parking deck, new fire training facility, create integrated transportation system, continuing sidewalk improvements, integrated transportation trails passing around, traffic circles as an option as intersection improvements are needed, urgent development, alternative transportation modes and improving entryway corridors. Everybody good with those?
Yep. Well, haven't we already laid a commitment on the new fire training facility?
I think we have, yes. So.
We're updating, like, we're not really doing.
Well, I know you all are addressing the fire training facility. So that was put in there, we can take it out, or we can leave it in.
I think it can be taken out. I think we've fought through this, you sent out today.
Yes.
Including, I mean, it's, we think.
All right, so let's take out new fire training facility.
Should we, should we take out the third one on the next bullet down, through traffic circles? We already do.
We do traffic circles as well.
We take that out as well.
So we can take that one out?
Yes.
Everybody good with that? All right, move on. We didn't have anything that was added and items that were removed, reclaiming or redeveloping such standard housing, they felt that does not belong in capital improvements, that needed to be in housing. The park on the east side, the multi-modal center, new fire station on the northeast side, continue to address new transportation needs, they thought that was already covered. And the interchange on popular roads. So these are things that either were covered somewhere else, or that they felt had already been accomplished.
What's, what's a multi-modal center?
Um, that's for transportation, where you have different types of transportation, that's all in one location.
So why would we take that out? Because there are still some opportunities for creating that kind of center within our transportation plans. Or is that the reason why they took it out? It's because they think it should be addressed in transportation? I mean, I'm asking because I think we could use.
Yeah, I think they thought it was addressed in the transportation plan, so they took it out of here, but we can make sure that it's addressed in the transportation plan and want to include it in that. So what I got to transportation. Anything else on this? Everybody good?
Good.
Okay. Items that were changed, instead of having the 50% of 180 exit miles, they wanted to continue to prioritize road resourcing needs, making more dental study and higher specific things, because they didn't know what would come up. And their extends sewer again to the EMC property to encourage industrial growth, they thought that needed to be full redevelopment and not be industrial growth there. And then they wanted to add in on the bottom one, the congestion issues, continue to address new transportation needs and congestion issues, since that came up a bunch, and then track the flow of more favorable road and full program. Okay, I've seen that. Everybody good?
Yes.
Economic development, you can see promoting mixed-use development, Caldwell Beach, not Pat Clinic Side, encouraging and supporting alternative unique job growth, cottage industry, and entertainment industry, so forth, focusing on being business friendly. Everybody good with those?
Could we take out the Caldwell, Caldwell text, which are already kind of missing that? And this is 20 years? The 20-year plan, you know, saying it's kind of.
Hopefully it'll be.
It could be 20 years.
Hopefully it'll be 20 years, so.
It'll be an offshore term work program.
Everybody, you want to leave it in, take it out?
Leave it in.
Items that were added, continue to emphasize name and sound care industry, promoting mixed-use development, EMC property again, supporting redevelopment opportunities in gray filled areas, lot, parking lots on Bullborough, Gringle Street is a redevelopment, and Temple Avenue is redevelopment, promoting educational opportunities for the workforce and promoting a hometown field by emphasizing safety in the arts.
The one about EMC property here, it says promoting mixed-use developments, just the very, very previous one.
It's a redevelopment.
For redevelopment.
Yeah, they thought it should be a mixed-use development, so they put that in there, but it can, we can do redevelop EMC site if you all want to do that, it's the specific, it'd be mixed-use development. Okay, so we can change that to promoting redevelopment opportunities under the promoting mixed-use developments.
And do we want to change that?
Or we can just take out EMC on that.
Maybe they have EMC.
Yeah, just say promoting mixed-use developments.
Okay, we'll take the EMC out. And you have a question on the hospital?
No, the last one, should we change that promoting small-town field?
That's actually, you all again, you all want it small-town, we can put small-town. You have small-town again, and you didn't say, but you changed it already.
Keep it.
Too small-town field?
Make it sister.
Okay. Items that were removed, emphasizing union as a biomedical hub, since they put in, continue to size the healthcare industry, they thought that covered that, and then attracting corporate office parks. Not, they didn't feel like there's a whole lot of land in the land that was though, maybe for office, whether it get used, so they took that out. But that may be something you all want to keep in there, since we talked about the class A office, or you could feel that's covered in that.
Yeah, example already covered in class A previously.
So down here they have, encouraging promoting long-term professional high-paying job growth, local professional high-paying job growth through advancing, advanced manufacturing class A office development to match what you had on needs and opportunities before. Promoting redevelopment instead of mixed-use development. The last one, supporting the film industry while continuing to maintain quality of life. They wanted to add that in because of all the issues that we've had to pass with the film industry. Any questions on those?
Do we need to specifically address the film industry?
That's up to you all. You all did last time, so they felt that if we were going to address it again, we needed to put in there that would maintain quality of life.
So who have to ask? Are you guys getting any applications or any requests for film, or is that starting to increase or?
Yes, but it's nowhere near the volume or the type of shows that we can see pre-COVID. Obviously, I think the industry has changed a little bit now, or a lot right now. What's going to happen in two, four, or five years, I think, may be hard to determine, but we may see it get closer to back to what we saw pre-COVID at some point, but not, receive requests, but not that other.
The movie industry is very tight with COVID precautions.
So can we just take out the film, just stay supporting the industry while continuing to maintain quality of life? Because we really do want to maintain our quality of life while encouraging industry, whether it's commercial or manufacturing, because we've addressed other places. And just kind of keep it, just support industry while maintaining quality of life.
Do you all want to do that? Do you want to take it out altogether, or leave it?
In 20 years, the film might be a fad, it's already gone from Georgia, moved on to who knows where, and something else is coming into Georgia.
I like it, you just ought to come out.
So take it out? Everybody want to take it out?
Come out, what, what are you, what are you going to?
Getting rid of the supporting the film industry while continuing to maintain quality of life, just take it out.
We're doing. I'm sorry? We're doing.
And I think, yeah, I think to Tracy's point, there's just maintaining quality of life part of that, it's what the important part of the whole thing is.
That's what they wanted to ensure, that if you said we're going to be supporting the film industry, that that quality of life is being maintained.
And that's why.
That's Mary's point, that's what you're doing, so.
Yeah.
All right, we'll take that out. Transportation. Go back?
Yeah. Based on some of the stuff we, we heard at our last conference, to the, we're looking at economic opportunity and capital improvements, we're talking about corporate office space, we're talking about, you know, a lot of things that traditionally have worked, but we've got some data that basically says that may not continue to be the same. You know, that lots of corporate offices are going higher work schedules and needing fewer space, less space, and the working from home trends are continuing to grow and the demand of, of employees and, so I'm trying to figure out if we need to address that, or if that is, what I'm concerned about is that we're saying let's develop all this and attract these office spaces, but we may be missing some of the things that cater to those who work from home. And maybe I'm getting a little too in the weeds, but I'm concerned that, you know, you think I'm getting too in the weeds on.
Yeah, this is too, this is way out on the way.
Okay.
So I'm, yeah.
No, that's what I said, what I said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody else? Have on the transportation? Allow encourage integrated sidewalk paths for small business development in around the central businesses, continue to maintain existing transportation network connections with neighborhood schools and residential developments with head by facilities. Some of this, we had to say route schools came down and did an assessment, so a lot of that was put into this plan as well. So some of that reflects that in these languages, that we're laying the last on, considering wide pathways, including pedestrian pathways, expected to existing by current paths, and then addressing parking needs in the downtown area. Any questions on any of those?
The first one there, in and around central business district with the link going from citywide, would it, I think it might be more beneficial to say just, you know, small business development citywide. Because you can get like little pop-up markets somewhere along the link, if we, if we propose our, you know, change like a container, shipping container, coffee shop somewhere along the link, or something like that, or a bike repair shop along the link, in just little pockets, you know, talk about pocket parks, but you get a pocket of them also along there.
So are you looking at?
Yeah, those are some of the things that along the, the Carrollton retail and the, the, and like those lines, they've got.
All sorts of stuff.
Yeah, all these wonderful things along that way that should get you.
And like, for example, you know, over in Summer Grove, where, you know, the link is, that park is thriving now because of the link, and there's absolutely nothing, again, a development desert, if you will, between there until you get to Kroger, you know, National Park, you know, and as you start getting into it. So there's definitely opportunities. You know, I don't want to discount the central business district, but I think we discount the whole rest of the city when we specifically call out the central business districts.
Okay, so would you allow and encourage integrated sidewalk paths for small business development?
Citywide.
Citywide or in and around the central business district and near the link?
I would encourage to take that in and around the central business district, just say citywide.
And so you just want citywide? Everybody good with that?
Citywide, too.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on there?
One other, number three and number four, is that saying the same thing? Basically, just add the word wide to number three?
Um, I think the number three was the neighborhood schools and residential developments, making connections there, and then the lineup one below it is considering why paths is that include pedestrian bike with a connecting to existing paths and so forth. So, the one is making connections neighborhood schools and residential areas, and the other one is connecting to existing paths. I think maybe you can combine that into one. We could do that, if you all want to do that, or we can get rid of one or two.
I think they are two different things, though. I mean, you know, we've got some paths that are coming and that aren't our childhood sidewalks that are existing in the neighborhood, like, that have some of the developers developed along the, it's not the high pass, it's the other one, the, leaving across the little lot, you see, for instance, there's that pathway, there's pathways in your neighborhood, that aren't city pathways, we need to make sure that those things are connected, and I think that's what number thirty-four is talking about, but then she's telling you specifically about schools connected to.
Yeah, I think safer routes.
I think they're, they're.
Okay, so just for my clarification, the wide, what is that? Are we talking about the narrow sidewalks and trying to widen sidewalks, or considering wide pathways? I mean, why specifically the wide path?
I think so that you can have a bike and ped at the same time, so that you, when you have the smaller one, where the bikes and so forth, it's, it's not safe for people, so they recommend the wider for bike and ped to be able to share, same space.
So kind of like, where it's like 12 feet wide, 14 feet wide.
So you can go out and do bikes and.
Key word there to consider. Okay.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. Developing a traffic control center, they felt that you need to study the benefits of a traffic control center, since we weren't sure we're going to go in that direction. So, encouraging a trolley, we got that, so they said expanding the stop school trolley. And then the last one, ensuring involvement regarding potential high-speed rail, so they involved, involved. There, it's an increasing involvement, and we weren't sure how this high rail, high-speed rail would go, so they would say ensure involvement. Any comments on that?
Anyone, the? The group just got. That, that group just got.
Too quick on that one.
Too quick, slow.
How, how's that high-speed rail coming along this side of?
I think it's almost.
So it's more than just real within?
They were leaving it in there because they thought it might come up again in the next twenty years, and so they addressed it.
That's pretty, they have it, haven't they?
And if there is funding or something, at some point in time, you'll have it in the plan. Anything else? Okay, consider internal transportation for Serta, which is Greta, those riders. And then encouraging more charging stations throughout the city and within new mixed-use developments.
What is internal transportation for Serta or Greta?
So that you can get people from like downtown areas or something to the bus route areas, so there'll be transportation from here out to the, if we don't have that right now, unless they do get the whole.
For the paid transport, maybe?
Yeah, there's a, there's a di-ride, that's what I call it, the car we did transport, you have to come and get that.
Charging stations, I think they're going to be commercials, mountain staying, a big concept, and they're, they're companies in that, in that world with their charging stations, and whether they're test whether they're own or whether they're somebody else.
Correct.
I mean, exactly, but that's not why I was putting, connecting to the weeds.
I think it's talking about why us putting them in, that others like what they have in target.
That's not us putting them in, that's them putting them in.
Correct, and within new mixed-use developments, because they felt like the mixed-use developments, they'd like to see them there for people to be able to use.
I mean, Mark is going to drive.
As you said, Mark, free market, right, dictate whether they do it or whether they don't.
Free market?
Free market.
Y'all want it in or out, or?
Mountain, yeah.
We don't want to stay in the way, I mean, I'm saying how we encourage it throughout the city, I mean, they can mark this much aside, whether they want to, they got them out there, partners, and they may want to, I mean, they may want to, we, we live off the carload of tanks, we're not really encouraging, but I don't know if we can encourage it throughout the city.
If we build a parking lot somewhere, or parking lots that we own somewhere, you know, we, that's our parking, our parking lots, and if we were to develop a parking deck, we would be considering that, because we have to add them ourselves.
I'm saying, if you call it a franchise, they're going to have to say, that he sits throughout the city, I don't think we need to go out and urge them necessarily to come back here. I mean, if somebody's commercial shows, I don't know what to do, it's like, okay, but, I'm saying, you're urging.
So y'all want to have something in there on charging stations, or not have something in charging stations?
I would like to say remove.
Um.
I mean, I mean.
Because even the DMXD, you can just say, you can say, encourage, you know.
No, there's, to your point, if it's, if it needs to be created, it'll, it'll, it'll happen by the mark, not encouraged.
So you just like, you want it removed, or you think it's a private sector?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I give that.
I, I, I think that there is, there's going to be some opportunities in our own stuff that we're working on. You know, we have several city-owned parking lots in downtown, we don't have, I mean, who's going to, are we?
Well, that means utilities coming in, including.
Right, and that's us.
I mean, if we're going to be charging stations, if you drive them out of town, I mean, if you live in town, you're not going to be charging stations part of that neighborhood.
Okay, I mean, we just have to, we're going to be talking about, you like the cars taking over and I'm the reevers, so I'm just thinking of this.
So in or out?
Out.
Out. Out.
Alright, ask them.
Okay, is this the last presentation slide?
Yes.
Okay, so would it buy, because I need to add, I'd like to add one.
Okay.
Council's consideration of adding this, to encourage the discussion of a rail line that links Newton and Savoy for train traffic.
That's it. Do you have a rail line there?
Yeah, there's a rail line, but train traffic on the rail line.
That's just like, that's more viral than like a rail from progress.
So can you?
I'll do it there.
Yeah.
So it says to add that in? Alright, we'll press and run it.
You're talking about like a tourist attraction?
That's, I bet it's going to be a discussion that's going to happen in the next six months, six, eight months, so maybe we'll add it by.
Everybody good?
Sure.
It's added, alright, we'll put different language in there. Housing, items that remain, considering new housing redevelopment and infill lots to increase downtown housing stock. Using amenities, materials sizes, et cetera, keep back there than ensuring quality housing development, and protecting existing historic residential neighborhoods in downtown and surrounding areas. Anything here?
Ivan?
Everybody good?
One of the things, I, I don't know, this is probably a good time to bring up a little, but have a couple conversations, and I don't know how else to say this, but, where we as a city can begin to identify, well, I believe that would be our own opportunity zones, where nationally they have it, and where there's, there's some real incentives and incentive by our people to come in and really attack those areas. For some, whatever we need to do to entice partnerships, et cetera, so, I don't know how that would be stated, but.
But is that under, maybe about, or past?
Probably not, I want it for housing.
I want it for, specifically for housing, I mean, so I, I'm just throwing out an idea for, for conversation, and how it's defined, I'll leave that up to all of us to contribute. I think, one of the things from Chris was addressing, there, to being able to address varying types of homes and housing, et cetera, if we want home, we want ownership to provide that. So how does a partner create zones, these pockets that we're talking about, with opportunity and creating opportunity zone? Whatever, whatever we do to encourage.
So is this?
And the more intense use of the land. That's, that's what I'm saying, I wouldn't, well, it makes any sense, but I, I do it.
So you're looking at exploring the possibility of creating opportunity zones with.
Yeah, and it doesn't have, maybe that's not the right verbage, I'm just saying. I put it like this, so anybody can go in at any given time.
The, the opportunity, you're using the opportunity home as an example of the highway incentive, yeah, sub incentive is really what it is.
That's all.
Did I mean that correctly?
Yeah. Good question.
Okay. You agree with that?
On five today.
So we're passing about.
Do you want to specific in the housing or everything?
Incentives for specific areas to promote housing.
Well, I think, I feel housing is just really key, key factor right now for us personally.
One question before we move on, they took out the high-end housing, didn't we, in this previous, didn't we just say we're going to keep that for some place?
Yes, but they took it out, because they took it out before, so they took it out here, y'all want to leave it, or leave it back there?
Put it back in.
Okay, and then the other was a mixture of uses within parking deck development area. That was something you all had discussed five years ago, which, parking deck wasn't built, so they took that out of there. So that's why that's been taken out.
Okay.
So we're going to leave in anticipating, preparing for high-end housing. Items that were added, addressing substandard housing through public-private partnerships, and encouraging mixed-use development with green space, residential, commercial offices, and workplace. Everybody good with that?
Um, quick question on the first one, the substantial, addressing substantial housing through public-private partnerships. After having that brief, you know, about the, with tornado relief and stuff like that, I don't know if that was necessarily a public-private partnership, but it was referring to the private sector, you know, through, through the nonprofits and stuff like that, and then having those coming in. And I think if you look a bit larger spec, larger picture, the, the PPPs, as it's sometimes called, or the public-private ventures, PPPs, don't, sometimes, oftentimes, don't work out very well. So would that maybe address substantial housing through, and I think we already talked about that earlier on another slide, and I can't remember which one it was and what we were talking about, but it was addressing substantial housing, or whatever it was, through partnerships, just basically like partnerships in.
So you want to leave out public-private, you just pick.
And that way it leaves it more broad, for, however it might be in the next twenty years.
Thoughts from the rest of the council on that?
I can see that.
Everybody good with that? So we'll take out public-private? Okay, items that were changed, you can see the current plan, encourages supportive development of multi-family lots. Commercial, they took that out, so that it just became adaptive use redevelopment, and then near-integrated amenities, they said integrating amenities and other uses. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next one, they just add near-accessible amenities and employment centers instead of near-downtown. And then they had using existing resources to meet the needs of group personal care homes, and they said expanding, I forgot to highlight that one, instead of using, so expanding resources to meet the needs of group personal care homes. Transitional houses, shelter space. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Quick question on going back up to the first proposed change one, encouraging and supporting adaptive use redevelopment and integrating amenities and other issues. Is that, talk about expanding our current zoning, because I'm sure we all, I got a call at least from someone, like we put a container home up, is that included something like that, like expanding, is that what that's talking about? To be able to put up container homes or garage door homes, or whatever you want to, the fad that that is?
Just, so a redevelopment, it could be, when they talk about encouraging supportive adaptive use and redevelopment, it could be anything from taking an old building and turning it into senior housing. Or it could be taking, like you have on Perry Street, where the guy took and made a house out of an entire commercial building. I think that's what they're referring to, more so than container homes.
Okay.
Everybody good with anything else on this one? Alright, community work program, short-term work program, you all familiar with this? This is in your book, if you'll look it over, let me know if there's any projects that are left out, or that we need to add in for the short term, as well as the long term?
Farmer Street Cemetery.
So not on the short term.
I'm sorry, Farmer Street Cemetery. We talked about addressing that as the other half of the city owned site that we just put on the CJ Smith site, and that's not up there on the short-term program.
Okay, we did that.
Can we add that, please, Hasko? Farmer Street Cemetery, any others that, and or you can look at it in the lobby notes, too, and then we'll bring it up at the twenty-fourth.
Let me ask a question, under the Palmer Street Cemetery, under the cost, and you won't put it, but to be determined, we don't know at this point.
Yes, we don't know, but we need to.
That's kind of the information group.
It will be determined.
And one, one thing I noticed is, second one talks about link, it's one to four, twenty years, hopefully the revenue five and beyond, should be addressed for the link?
It's actually in the long-term work program, so we've got the link trails remaining, so we add that in there, we just put it in the long.
Okay, because I know you should start from five years.
Five years, yes.
So this goes through twenty twenty-two, which is what next year?
Correct, we'll be done with the place for, and then they put that in twenty twenty-six.
Just make sure you address that for the next four years also.
They'll get that.
We're not gapped.
Alright, then capital improvement el, improvements element, and again, land use, the capital improvement element pretty much contains what you had in there, it's the CIE, as y'all know, it's where we do our impact fees, you get that, and we will have to pass it separately, because DCA reviews it separately, but you all familiar with that one? So we just make adjustments and so forth based on our projects and our, excuse me, populations.
So there will be a minor reduction in the impact fee, I believe, Grace, you know, the new calculation, not substantial, but the impact fee will be reducing a little.
That's correct, yes.
Real fast, go ahead, so number five, chapter five, we addressed, I think technically, isn't Farmer Street Cemetery and all, that's still technically part of CJ Smith Park, right?
Right.
No, it's separate.
Okay, okay.
Um, I'll start, there was one other one I had, under.
Do we need to do anything additional for computer security?
I think they.
Keep it on the radar, or?
No, the short term is what I'm looking for. Don't sound.
That one's sort of a store that switches.
Yeah, we have that under.
I'm trying to think of how you would want to potentially address that inside of the comprehensive plan where we're addressing.
Okay, I see.
Sectionary emergency operations center.
Okay, now we're doing a lot of things, technically, it's large.
Yes.
And grant somewhere, and everything.
Okay, what I'm seeing is the, the housing issues, or where is that, is that not here, is it on the, I see the short-term work program, very top.
Yes, NSP, free chip.
But I'm looking at long-term, we've identified in here, but there's a need to look at housing, whether it be affordable or high, and none of that is, is mentioned in our long-term, is that where it's supposed to be, or are we just missing it?
No, we can have it in, we just did it for the grant period, which would be four years, or chips, next two years, and the CDVG on, on getting it in and so forth, but we get, the NSP is closing that out, so, we just figure we would add it, as we do this every year as an update, and we get additional grants and so forth. And we can put it in as something along the lines of exploring grant opportunities for housing, we've done that in the past, and then that'll open it up, so if we do need to apply for grants, we'll have that one in.
Yeah, let's do it.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Could you add that, please, Hasko?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
It's exploring grant opportunities for housing. So in the future, if we apply for CDVG or chip or one of those, we have it in there.
It's not just grants, it's also looking at our ordinances that we encourage different types of housing product that we currently don't allow, or changing what we allow.
Would you do that, it's back? Would you do that anyway?
Yeah, okay, but, I mean, we can do all of this.
It's more, it's more showing a, of a goal, stating it as a work program, a work program would be the resulting implementation of something, I would.
Okay, so.
We put it back in the goals under housing, I can put score grant opportunities.
Okay.
Maybe we need to change the development link trail, projection, projected completion date to be on the twenty-third, we can really do the whole link trail by the next nine years. Very, very, we update this. We just put out to claim forty-one, since that's what goes to.
We can put it out to there.
Anything to turn for something.
We'll put it out there.
Actually longer.
When we, when we resurface streets, do we know that, is that in there?
Traditionally has not been, there would be nothing that would prohibit us from putting that annual program in there, if it is an annual program.
I'd, I'd like to put that in there, just to keep up with it.
Yeah.
Is there a straight center needed?
The next sentence.
Everybody good with the resurfacing program, Ian, in here?
Thank you, is the ARCA in that short-term program?
What?
ARCA.
Not yet.
I don't think it's in there.
I mean, you can put a general statement about ARCA, but we, we got a whole process to go through to define what those programs are all.
Anything else? Alright, we covered the CIE, now we're in land use, we did things a little differently with your future land use map than what you're used to, we actually looked at more of character areas, so instead of it pretty closely matching the zoning designation, we took a stab at doing something a little different. So for example, we've got several new things we put together, such as built communities, these are areas in the city that are middle income here, so you can see where they're already developed, it's, it's areas developed with variety of residential dwellings and non-residential uses that provide goods and services to the surrounding neighborhoods. Future land uses should closely mirror the built community as already established, so if somebody wanted to come in and rezone property in some of these areas that are already been developed or built, they would need to have something that would pretty much mirror what's out there now.
So much sales, densities, product, yeah, absolutely.
So we felt that that's a better way to do it, and again, remember that this only happens on rezonings with the future land use map. So when you're looking at this, this is, you know, if they're able to do it now under the current zoning, they can do it. But this is, somebody comes in and says, I have a lot out here and I want to develop, they would need something that would be consistent with those neighborhoods that are out there.
Okay, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Yeah, focus.
I'm having a moment. So are we talking about redevelopment within those neighborhoods or near them, or one of the white spaces here and say, okay, we want to do something that, you know, I'm confused, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, okay, so what we did is, you know, we usually have, so we took and we have these areas that you see in the blue here, this is going to be historic neighborhood.
Right.
We said we felt that's a little different than the built communities out here, okay? Because the most land in the historic neighborhoods are going to have buildings that are fifty years old. We didn't catch all of them in that, but you know, we pretty much stuck to the areas mostly around the downtown area. So we went in and said, if you're going to develop in the historic neighborhoods, then not only should you be along the size of what's in there, but you also have a look, kind of with the mass and the things that you look at at historic properties. So that you have the character aspect of it, in addition to matching as far as the, what's along with it, what's neighboring it, you know, what kind of uses you have.
Built communities in this sense is different from built community on the second slide.
So the built community here are very existing residential neighborhoods or communities where it may be other than residential neighborhoods. But there's a character to that, that's not a historic character, but the size, the mass, and things along those lines.
What she's done is, on this slide, she's just broken, broken it up, just showing you, if you go back to the last slide.
That's all.
They're showing is yellow, go to this slide, and she's just showing you built community.
Right, she's showing me the community that she's talking about, but I guess in here, because the built community is clearly delineated, you're really saying that it has to take a character of where it's located. Not necessarily these specific neighborhoods that are designated as built community.
That's wrong.
That's what I was trying to say.
That's what you said, what you said.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then here, we got a murky missing middle, we talked about having that missing middle need where you have things like duplexes, triplexes, quads, things along those lines. You can have single residential too, single family residential, but it's between four and seven units. And we took the vacant land, the steering committee did, and you can see the tracks here in the blue. And these are the ones that they wanted to identify as a mixture of residential opportunities that were a little higher density, but not high density. It could be small apartment buildings.
So are you saying that we should exclude those opportunities from other areas and focus on these? Or is this just where there's a greater opportunity for those?
This would be a greater opportunity to fall into those areas there, that doesn't mean, I've got others on here, mixed use development, and that could be included. It could be part of, as your built community, if you have areas that have duplexes there already, or townhouses, or whatever, then you're looking at that character when you're, you know, analyzing your rezoning and saying, hey, it is consistent with what's out there. So a lot of it's going to be based on what's existing and already built in these districts. This one here for missing middle is vacant land.
Okay, but missing middle, I mean, just.
But it can go in other areas.
That's what I'm.
We're just saying for these parcels right here that are vacant land, these are the ones they identified as areas they'd like to see that private.
I understand, thank you.
And then we got historic neighborhood, which is what we talked about, where you have a little more of the heritage there, so make sure that you don't kill, if you don't put a little shell out there, you don't put something that's going to, you know, take a Spanish motif out in the middle of our downtown historic districts. And so that's, again, historical residential homes, we included Chancuelo in there because we're looking to make it historic. And so it's going to be those areas that's getting around downtown that include your historic district, but also may extend outside of that. And then we got mixed use opportunities. These are vacant lands or existing mixed use that's already been approved, and these are areas that they felt, and this is over here off of eight-five, and then across the block path. Or Boulevard, excuse me, where they felt there may be some opportunities to do a mixed use development, of course, we have a plan, just like we have with our mixed use development. But they identify those, as well as there's an area here where we have the Newton loss, and then the other side across the railroad from Newton loss, where it has industrial there as a potential mixed use development. Any questions on that, you all are familiar with our mixed use development? Redevelopment opportunity areas. So these are areas we identified in the city as areas we feel in the future probably will need to be redeveloped or looked at, and we'd like to encourage in these areas. You've got four main areas here, it's north side of Bull Pearl, goes from recent trail all the way up to our old Jefferson Intersects. You got the old Peasmont Hospital site, and then the grocery and so forth out there by Temple. You've got down here on Rainbow Street, Boy's Sewell, and then over here First Avenue where the industrial buildings are, and this would be redevelopment opportunities. These are sites where, and it could be, you know, you're going to come in and you're going to request uses for this area. And again, it's up to you all to decide if this is something that you'd like to see out there. More than just future land use impacts how zonings are approved, but if these are areas that we would like to see ultimately, or feel like over the next twenty years are going to be redeveloped.
Would, kind of, take a picture, kind of going back to what Paul said earlier about having that opportunity zones for housing, would that be a slide we could identify? Is that something that would need to be identified in this section as well? Like identify those areas that you're talking about?
Oh, you mean like having a, on the future land use map, some sort of area of residential that we identified as.
Yeah, is that?
Redevelopment areas, or not redevelopment areas, but areas to focus.
Yeah, whatever that whole thing was.
Haskell wrote a note, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's under Paul, but when you were talking about incentives or opportunities for residential development, Haskell made a note on here that need to identify the particular type of housing that you're looking for. Because based upon what I've heard you sit here and say the night in another meeting, you're probably not wanting to consent an apartment complex.
Correct.
Okay? So to generally just say to consent housing is not, I think, what you're looking for. So we were going to try to learn language that would incent the type of redevelopment, infill type, neighborhood stabilization type programs. And I think that's what you're looking for. In these redevelopment opportunity areas, what the staff was trying to do was find areas that we think there are potential because property may be underdeveloped in a variety of different ways. It may be underdeveloped in simply providing services and opportunity for the community. It may be underdeveloped in terms of land value for the owner, it may be underdeveloped for a lot of different reasons. These are a lot of older shopping centers, well, nineteen eighty-sixy shopping centers, highway strip centers, some vacated healthcare facilities. That are probably going to need some type of incentive or opportunity to encourage the redevelopment to occur. And if they don't have that type of encouragement, they may or potentially could sit their state affairs for a while and put a market in the dollar more to redevelopment. Which we've been talking about that for many, many, many years, over the twenty-one years, and we've been talking about redevelopment on the Marshall corridor or the Bull Pearl, it's really getting happened. So that's kind of trying to bring it all together, Council.
So on this redevelopment opportunity areas, we're looking at this right now, year one, but have you tried to look into the future and see what it's going to look like in year fifteen or year twenty?
I think it's very difficult, I think we're just identifying where those opportunities are and then do a plan.
You're good.
Appreciate that. I think there's more work to do here to refine this, other than, you know, I think, I think Council, you almost said it correctly, maybe this is an opportunity for some type of additional plan, strategic plan inside of these particular redevelopment opportunity areas. That include layers of incentives, incentives. And one thing that we really wanted to do, because we heard this from council, we heard this from the community, we heard it from the community. Apartments, there was concerns, as you mentioned, about the number of requests we have for apartments and their locations. If you take it, if you look at the entirety of this future land use map, we're trying to give this elected body a tool that you can use in those particular applications for rezoning. Tracy, can you go back to the full land use map formula real quick? You got a copy right in front of each of you. Yes, all the colors. Really, the only two categories there that would potentially be in compliance with high density multifamily would be either mixed use or redevelopment opportunities. Then that's where you, and I would imagine if it was a standalone garden style apartment request on Bull Pearl in a redevelopment opportunity, that may not get a lot of support. But if it was a mixed use component that was mixed into the fabric of the shopping center with bridge-based, common space, some repels, and some shops, you may get some support. So what this does, this tells the community that, hey, we're just not opening a business in every single location for high density apartments, but we've got some areas that are identified that not only would search the housing needs, but potentially even reinvest in some areas that are currently underutilized. That was our strategy with this particular land.
The whole point is to drive.
To show both the community and the development community where we're open for potentially considering those applications where you have a better chance of success with an application. We're trying to give this elected body a good tool to use in those areas.
Correct.
Yeah, that's good. Hopefully you understood what I said.
I do, I do. I think that under our housing, we talked about affordable housing, and affordable housing often comes in the form of apartments, or, you know, some sort of rental. Because not everybody is able or ready to buy a home, so how do we address that? Because most of our.
I think the opportunity still exists. I think, I think it, I think it exists in forms of smaller, this doesn't talk about size, this doesn't talk about price. Right?
No, but it does add some parameters that maybe you're, that I'm concerned about, I won't say that I'm concerned.
Well, I'll throw an example out of where this may comply, where it may not comply. Let's say someone comes into an area that's either currently shown a future land use map as historic neighborhood or built neighborhood, all right? And if they come in and ask for a, you know, a twelve, fourteen, sixteen, twenty year apartment complex, affordable housing, or a series of duplexes or quads, I think they could probably show you a product and make an argument that would comply to meet those needs under this designation. But if they came in with a request in those communities to build a five-story, three-hundred ewe apartment complex that were all affordable, I think it applies to this. So I think that's the tool that it's going to give you. That's, and we're happy for suggestions and input from changes, though, it's our proposal.
So how is this different from a development plan?
Basically what it is. It's just not a strategic development plan. A lot of communities will go the next step further, and then we develop corridor plans, they'll develop strategic community redevelopment plans that will actually go like through the LCI process, that will actually show land use, show building scale and the sort of structure. That is not what a comprehensive plan is.
Right.
Comprehensive plan is a lot higher level.
Right, and so all of that would lead into, do we have any, you know, this may just be segwayed into something that we do later, but I just want to put it on the table.
Could be.
That, maybe that's something that we are at, we should be looking at as a development plan, you know, we had, because we're right here together.
You typically do it in specific strategic areas and not community-wide.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that I think that that's a tool that we ought to explore at some point later on, is the development plan for our city. And for certain areas, especially those that we're identifying as redevelopment opportunities.
LCI money can be out there for that Bull Pearl sort of reason, but we've done that.
This is a politically new approach, I know there's a lot of threads in the line, but we're still on the timeline, I know, you need to get something back to us, you need to get it back, you know, in a matter of a couple of days.
Yeah, it's got a couple of little things that don't, like it's just the, some things that were missed.
Yeah, I'll try to look big pictures on this map and not pay as much attention to specific parcel lines. As a matter of fact, we've been debating on removing the parcel lines.
Yeah, that would lead to, you know.
We actually debated on that.
Yeah.
Like public institutional, I would give you a list.
Character you, are you grabbing up pretty much?
This is a program.
Can I ask a quick question, back to the land use, we still, we're talking about. Hypothetically speaking, and this is the more near per view, I guess, Paul decides to stop golfing, Summer Grove Golf Course decides to sell, and somebody decides to build a development inside Summer Grove. Is there anything to stop them from doing that?
Yeah, they're part of a master plan, so any changes that go.
The master plan is for the subdishes, but not for the golf course.
Well, the master plan shows the golf course.
So if they're going to go in and do that, they're going to have to come to you all.
Okay.
We had broadband services that they may have in, they've identified one area, they say we don't have broadband, but I doubt that because it's Homestead, and I think pretty much they had broadband out there. But I think it's old map that they provided, through the state provided it to us, so we addressed those issues. Our next step would be bring this to you all, for trans middle, and any comments and stuff, we'll get that back out to you. And then at that point, we'll send it to DCA, Three Rivers, and wait for their comments, and you all will adopt it in October. Thank you all, I know this is long and stuff, but we really need to get your feedback on this plan.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, at Paul.
All right.
I need that something. Thanks, Tracy.
Are you serving something?
What, you're saying Mark's foot? I'm sorry.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're, if you need a break, you know.
Go into the. Okay, all right. Going to discuss the draft ordinance of our distilled spirits regulation. We actually had this discussion at the last council meeting. We took feedback from that particular council meeting. We have been speaking with other community members, we've been speaking with operators, which we have learned a lot, we have been speaking with distributors, which we've learned a lot, we've been speaking with regulators, which we've learned a lot. Actually, since we've left that council meeting, I think this is version number seven. We've been tweaking, we feel like it's in pretty good shape, and we thank a lot of your feedback, but since it's pretty short, I think we can make our way through this thing. And you can see the actual red line version that I have, but people in the audience, you'll just hear what I've gotten. One of the first changes that we have made, because I had some questions from some operators, when we had our minimum square footage, they asked me, did it include certain spaces? Did it include storage area, did it include break rooms, mechanical rooms, shed turtle space, et cetera? So I went ahead and clarified that it did not include those particular areas, that's one way to handle it. Another way to handle it would be to simply just maybe raise the square footage and say the total square footage of the store would have to be X, that would maybe make it simple. In this particular case, five thousand square feet is not going to be the minimum, so this will be five thousand square feet plus five hundred for storage, five hundred for cooler space. And then since you're not including other areas in that calculations, that minimum square footage probably going to be closer to seventy-five hundred, eight thousand square feet by the time you got the way it's currently written right now. Another thing that we have learned, Council McCarrick brought this up at the last meeting, where did the three hundred thousand inventory come from? Speaking with operators, we found out that that was woefully low. We heard examples of where there were operators with a little over three thousand square feet that had over half a million square feet of inventory. Some of the biggest stores we hear are carrying well, well, well in excess of a million dollars in inventory. I am proposing right here at seven hundred and fifty thousand, also that's a consideration. I have learned that is a consistent number with what Witty County is going to propose to the commissioners. So that is the first paragraph of the red line items, so comment.
Look, I think one thing too, we are basically trying to be consistent.
We are.
Nothing's going to stop somebody from being on Max House City, and it succeeds you're cheaper, and it'll be in any type of city that you can.
We're going to try to be as consistent as we can, I agree. So we have substantially increased from three hundred to seven hundred and fifty is the proposal, there will be compensation, about even go to a million. I think we've got an operator in the back.
I like, I like the seven, I like the three-quarter billion. To your point earlier about the five thousand. To your point earlier about the five thousand square feet, would it just be better to say, okay, round it up to eight thousand square feet and be done with it? Or do you want to break it all out to where you take the tape measure and go, maybe with the five hundred square feet?
I don't know how important it really is at this point, because if your inventory is going to be seven, three quarters will be in the order, they're going to have to file a pretty decent size charter anyway.
So do you just make a flat number and be done with it?
There is a tort record, we all saw.
Yeah, there is a tort record, we all saw.
So suggestion is eight thousand? Suggestion is eight thousand square feet and that's all the provision?
Well, that's just making a good point, so go ahead and raise it a bit.
Sure, thank you. I had drawn the distinction that in certain, whatever the number is, under roof square footage total, again, Cletus has called it out for five thousand square feet, we'll call it showroom space. So you don't have all three thousand square feet of what looks like a warehouse. When you walk into a five thousand square footage box and you're pulling something out of a box. Or storage space look as opposed to what Cletus has drawn it here is for showroom space, and then the additional is for, you know, your back of the house. If it's just a blanket number, you may get something that looks like the back of the house, but the majority of your space is just something to consider.
So you like how it's written?
Yes, certainly.
Specifically delineated kind of showroom space.
I agree with that, because of what I'm supposed to have, we got like a closet stand. I don't know, you may, you may not, I don't know. A menu board, they pass the bucket off.
Want further review?
Alright.
What do you mean, reading?
Leaving the act of this?
Don't say, I wondered at some point down, you put so many restrictions on, what is that building going to cost?
Very expensive?
It's going to be expensive, you got to spend a hundred thousand dollars to rent it out. These, you start building buildings, you're getting...
Well, let's be honest here, there's a lot of comparison to a store in East Street, Future City called Kegron, World of Bears. I think that's a lot of the comparisons that a lot of people do as quite as kind of a prototypical store, high-quality, nice store with a lot of variety. I don't think any of you have been there, I actually drove by a couple of weeks ago on purpose to go look at it. I actually even went to Fayette County Taxation Service Office to pull down this eighty-seven hundred square feet. Eighty-seven hundred square feet.
All under roof.
Yeah, all under roofs.
Is there anything to prevent us from being like two-story buildings that can fit into a smaller lot?
Nothing as written.
But that's very inconvenient for...
Very inconvenient for an operator, that two-story size would occupy that, and that's just...
Alright, keep asking.
Alright, move, again, if you want to come back, I'll move forward with this.
Yeah.
I heard concerns at the last meeting about it being too close to near residential neighborhoods, and you gave some references. So one of the first things that I did initially, I struck out the CUN, Neighborhood Community District, which would include some of the locations, some of the New Old Store, the Rush Foods, Sprayberry location, the Parker's spray location, the Pennsion Street.
East Broad.
East Broad corner. So it removed a lot of those neighborhood areas. Then after I continued to get into the, and looking at the locations, I went ahead and removed the CHV areas, even though CHV is the most intense category we have. It's got a lot of auto repair or wrecker services, et cetera. The way our CHV categories are shown and designated, they are pretty close to residential neighborhoods, which is kind of strange, you'd think those type of high-intense uses would be the furthest away, but it's just the way it is in Nimmie. So I tried to just target it to our major highway, commercial, shopping center districts, so I'm recommending the three categories, PDC, CGN, and CCS. Okay, that kind of addresses some of your neighborhood concerns. You will see that I modified some of the distance languages, but I kept the distance pretty much the same. We referenced some of the state statute references, there's, and I gave you some guidance in there. There are some distances we can't change. Mr. Sears, one of those is obviously distance on the Polish cancer, right? And that's set in the law, can't be changed, neither less or greater. I have added, it must be three hundred feet from a residentially zoned, single-family dwelling. I know the counselor and I have had a little bit of conversations, you know, where we may disagree a little bit, whether it should be just simply residential or creating high-density apartments. By the way, I got it proposed differently than a single-family. If we treat them all the same, I want to tell you, we've got a lot of apartment complexes that are located in a lot of those areas that are oftentimes adjacent. If we get that distance too big, I'm happy to get onto the map and show you some buffers and some radiuses of what it would do. You could potentially adopt an ordinance that's very, 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 very difficult to find a location and just going to do exactly what Councilman Shale here, and drive one straight to the county, if it gets passed into county, for two. So thoughts on those distances and zoning districts?
I like the way you've written it, personally, because I had this conversation, I had a chat regarding coming up from Florida. Many of these larger establishments, ABC Liquor, et cetera, those can go on. They were in housing areas that were rehabilitation was taking place, you had the markets and all those, and that's where they were, so you can't be too restrictive, because that's where these types of location or this type of business is going to be located. And it's going to be by Ashley Parks, going to be out in those key areas where they're going to generate traffic.
Let me give you...
I like the three hundred feet from residential.
Let me give you just a real quick illustrative example of what a buffer would do. Let's take a parcel that I believe someone had looked at, I've been contacted, even though they don't know where it's going to be permitted yet. And it's out on Luna Crossing Boulevard East in front of the Kroger Shopping Center, there's an out parcel. I'm going to highlight that out parcel for you up here. It's right there, right at the corner of Summer Grove, I think I want to know where that is. It's really close to the Link Crossing, right by the Link Crossing. If I were to put a buffer in there of three hundred feet as I have as written, you're going to see the buffer pop up. You see the buffer I've drawn around it? So with inside of that buffer, you have to ask yourself, is there a single-family residence of some property? An answer in this case would be no. And you would think that's probably a pretty appropriate location. If we were to make that a bigger number, and make that, let's say, the six hundred feet that I've heard some people have talked about, let it be the three hundred feet to that. Alright, then all of a sudden, the buffer gets into the neighborhood, back behind the veterinarian, back behind the daycare, et cetera. So then it would not be a reasonable location. So you've got to be real careful, because when you get behind our highways, commercial areas, we got a lot of residential properties that are behind shopping centers, and we design it that way for accessibility. Again, I think three hundred is a good number to start with, but I wanted your input.
I'm just curious why we have the six hundred for schools and school stuff, and three hundred for churches?
Stay off. Just wanted to run that.
For the, three, six hundred for the schools, why don't we, can we increase it to six hundred for the churches as well?
Yeah. Three hundred, three hundred and six hundred is the minimum as currently stated in statute. And that's why it's in there.
It goes back to the same point, I mean, why do we have it farther from schools? Because there's kids present, there's kids present in churches as well. And we are, and we're allowing them to be open on Sundays.
You don't have that many schools in the town, you've got a lot of churches, you can't draw restrictions yourself, a whole lot of...
You're not going to decide on three hundred versus six hundred for churches, but here's one thing that I would suggest if we can do this, and it's something that Mr. Sears needs to answer. I would say a permanent place of worship, and not someone renting out a shopping center location.
Absolutely, that's...
Not someone that's renting out a, other temporary facility where it's not used as a permanent church facility.
How would that affect if you do six hundred to permanent? How would that affect?
It's hard for me to go on this map and start showing you where the churches are. What's going to happen for potential investors? They're going to come in and they're going to see these, and they're going to start looking at sites, and they're going to go through and do their homework and see what's being built, that's all I can really tell you.
I don't know whether the bypass rate used to be as a church there now across community utilities, et cetera. That's a permanent thing, right? That's a permanent thing. And so that puts, if you go to six hundred, that puts that bypass line there out.
But this is clearly written, the license is written in that location, the church comes in later, then it doesn't affect...
Why is that a church site?
The church is site, it's not initial permanent.
Corner of Hillwood.
Yeah, bypass. So if you put six hundred, then that throws a whole lot of the bypass out.
A lot of the bypass.
It's in the old Whistler.
Oh, the old Whistler, you're right. Yeah, these distances, let me go to distances. As this is crafted, how you measure, I have crafted this exactly as how it reads in the state statute. And it reads, "All measures shall be measured by the most direct route of travel on the ground." Well, what that means is, you measure this, not really the way I measured it, I just showed you an example. By basically going out the front door, going down the roadway, you get to one of these institutions. It could actually end up being close to adjacent, but the roadway to get to is more than three hundred to six hundred feet. We chose as a body not to use that form of measurement for our current alcohol licenses. We currently use a, basically as a crow would fly, measurement from my nearest front door to front door. Now that's...
To property line, front door to property line.
It's front door to property.
No, it's in here, it's...
No, no. We're talking about our current pouring licenses and our current package licenses, we measure differently. So the question is, that we want to measure as the state's in statute?
So you're talking...
Or do we want to try to measure the way that we are currently measuring?
You're talking about the front door to property line.
The way it's drafted here as stated in the statute, it follows the roadway. How do you physically drive down the roadway from the place of the package store to one of these prohibited distances? The way we currently measure in our ordinance for our current licenses is by straight line.
It needs to be what the statute says, it's a straight line thing. Just, that's what I meant. That's where it's so far. I agree.
I would always recommend a certain, rather recommend follow statute.
But did you give a list?
This, talk about...
Your license is being sued, you follow statute, you're on...
Well, if you look, everybody's had it, I gave several examples.
That's in the statute.
Yeah. What different people, but we actually changed the, the way we did it in nineteen sixty-six, it was ninety-six. Nineteen ninety-six was written from property line to property, alright? And council felt like that was too restrictive, and we went back and changed it from the front door to license establishment to the nearest property.
The statute clearly says to measure the other way.
Which was different, but if you look, I mean, everybody's got their own opinion of how to do it.
I would recommend statute follow statute. Alright, going on now, I think there's some consensus there. I have defined the no person group for any senior family members in clothing factor shall be interested more than one license. I think that was a request that we cleared on that one.
Alcohol, I mean, like, somebody on the beer and wine license. If somebody in their hand didn't want to miss, that would exclude that.
It says interested more than one license for the package sale of Distilled Spirits. So they could then turn around and have a reichelant, they have pouring license.
Quick question, going back to the distances, I was just going real briefly through here. Petrie Corn, very last page, they even had it, it's distance from parks. So, you know, doesn't want to be close to any parks and something like that, is that something we would consider?
Keep in mind, under the state laws, the only definitive institutions are churches, schools, rehabilitation centers, homes run by the state, housing of large properties, and less than, I forget what it was, five hundred units.
Yeah, I got it.
Five hundred units, and any claim, is that, that's all?
That's it.
Alright.
Mostly, mostly.
The rest of it is up to you.
That's right, most, sure stations don't even regulate distances for residential.
Yeah. Now, and you'll see different people look at it.
The link is a park.
Look at it a different way, but if you, for those of you who recall, ninety-six, when we originally did no prints consumption, we had, you cannot have no prints consumption within a hundred feet of a residentially zoned property. And one particular one was Shalakas, who could not get a pouring license for years because the fact it was a hundred feet over the layer of water's house. And so I think it was what, two thousand six, eight?
That was removed. There is no business for removal, there are other licenses for residential.
Okay.
On that first page, the second question, why don't you drive through? Do they have, I don't see much longer, we've got a nice, we've got a lot of restrictions, you gotta fix that. Long would it drive through?
That's in current, we don't permit drive-through in the current course of prepared water. And the reason that was put in? And council decided that it was...
They just started to change it all.
I don't know, everybody in council is huge.
But, but, I don't know. In your research, do they come up?
I don't see it addressed very often in that, in the research. I don't know if someone said it's addressed.
Of course.
How often do you see drive-throughs in your package stores?
Not often.
Okay, he's not aware of it, alright.
Texas.
But one thing I will say is COVID and stuff, that was a big thing, many hospitals, because people didn't want to come in.
Good point, good point.
Where they ordered ahead, five square feet, you got one, and as long as you're coming, you can't come in, you know, this is drive-through, you look in there, put it out, then you pick it up.
But you did a curved side pickup.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
That's same thing, but... Yeah.
It's up to you all. And the door day don't matter, alright. Alright, one of the other big changes that I did, we originally had proposed four, after talking with several operators, after talking with the county, after talking with Sonoy, after looking at that map that I gave you that shows current package stores that are either in the county now or within two miles of the county limits. How many package stores were on that? Yeah, a bunch. And I heard from a lot of operators, for the operators to be successful, well, we don't need the saturation of the market. I'd recommend we go back from four to three, the county is also going to put theirs at three. Sonoy is not going to draft an ordinance until they see whether or not it passes, and we don't know what Sonoy's going to do. So four to three, and some tweaking the language down there.
You got a population difference.
As the population goes over, yes, so I just made those tweaks. Thoughts, everybody comfortable for four to three? I think everybody, what I heard, would be comfortable. On the very last page, to make this quick, we defined the application process a little bit more, because I was afraid that, based upon what I'm hearing from people, that if we adopt this, we may start pursuing applications thinking they're first in line even before the referendum. So I actually put that applications would not be accepted to the effect of they were disordered. So I actually put that applications would not be accepted to the effect of they disordinates. The effect of they disordinates is when the electoral results are certified. And then I have a sixty-day application window, which we receive the initial round of, of applications. That clarifies when they're going to be accepted. Uh, secondly, we clarified in here the time of sale, which mimics the current package store sales with the exception of Sundays. It has been determined by our esteemed legal counsel here and his, and his counterparts, that if we wanted to do, um, Sunday sales in package stores, we're going to have to have it as a valid question. And at this point in time, we've chosen just to not allow a Sunday. That gives the operators some time to close their doors and go home, in my opinion, spend time with their families, not have to worry about competing with the other stores open on Sunday. Am I right or wrong?
They're going to be received.
That's right, that's all right. But anyway, that's the draft ordinance. I think it's in pretty decent shape.
What is the difference, uh, Atlanta Regional Commission, their population figures, and then our U S Census? Having, and the Census numbers only come out every ten years. A R C does updates.
Yeah, we need to use the Census figures, they're official.
Yeah. Census?
But every ten years is the only time you have.
So strike out Atlanta Regional Commission?
Correct. There is one other quick item we have here. Uh, Mr. Sears wanted to get some feedback on this. You will see in the licensing application procedure, I don't remember where it was, but Mr. Sears, there was a prohibition against lobbying council members during the out.
Well, and that needs to say, I mean, a licensed official is not a council official.
Yeah, what was that, Brad?
No, I, I'm not sure that's important. Since it goes back, you, it, it, as, as some of my colleagues have said, violates First Amendment rights, it violates the rights of citizens, the conditions of the government, uh, under, uh, circumstances. Uh, one of them said.
Well, also, I think it's common sense.
So you're going to do it, and the other thing is, it was the owners, on the council member.
Bottom three.
Or.
Last minutes.
Was it instructed?
And then the, the big thing is the intent to lobby. And so what, if the penalty is, and, and the concern was, if somebody submits what is otherwise a valid, um, application and they are disqualified, or they're able to go through the, the lottery process, that that, under the ordinance, has been violated their due process rights. So, you know, alcohol licenses are a privilege. Uh, they're not a right. The county is not going to put it in, so.
I mean, nobody, the fact is, council, I don't have, not going to ever touch any of them.
Correct.
It's all lottery, it's all by third party.
It, it comes to us at the end.
Yes.
But we don't have any knowledge.
I know, but when they, when y'all have, we have to, we have to say, yeah.
Third party is not, they call, will be your council. Probably not.
So that's worth a stop, just until this happens. How do we know the twenty cents per liter rate?
The statute.
That is, okay, that's.
That's statute.
Okay.
That's it. Yeah. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor. How's it going? Anybody?
All good?
Good.
You're eighty to eight twenty. Maybe they can get to five hundred. You went two in a row. Anybody else?